Mrs. Crowder?
Present.
Mrs. Major?
Present.
Mrs. Dobbs?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mrs. Stenber?
Here.
Hearing individuals, before we go to that, I've got something to read first. Okay, each person addressed in the board shall give his or her name, address, and topic. District residents have the first priority to speak. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total of thirty minutes is used. Persons desiring up to five minutes to speak should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on a regular gym. Once a person has finished speaking, his or her time is forfeited. Speaking time cannot be transferred to another person. And we'll first start with Mr. Crow.
I asked, oh, we had him on the agenda, Dwayne Henon's on the agenda, he has another meeting, so if you don't mind, I have to go first.
Start here.
My name's Dwayne Henon, two thousand and one Parkwood Drive Northwest, down in Ohio. And I'm coming in representing Steel Valley Rising Initiative. And we're actually putting a proposal to lease part of the building up front of the elementary school. And what we're using it for would be for educational and equipment purposes, to help more as a community collaborative, working together with the community, and helping those that are like seeking jobs, helping those that need computer skills, financial literacy, and programs such as that, basic life skills as well. In our Phase One, Phase Two will go on in more like technology innovative type of activities, like learning to process name made things. But, you know, that's our working alongside both the city and the state. We have some state funding as well, so we're not looking to get anything from the school board, it's actually more just leasing part of the property. I'm not sure, I believe that you guys may have seen the proposal already that I put forth.
Any questions from the board members?
So at what time of the day do you need any room?
Well, I, you know, I think we can be flexible on that, because I think a lot of it might be like later afternoons, evening timeframe. So probably wouldn't interfere with any practice school activities. And we can arrange times away where there are no activities without kind of interchange.
Currently, we use that area down there, with this gym, it's used pretty much every evening.
Okay.
On the weekends, actually during the school day, it's not really used.
Okay, and that might be an option too, just doing during the day, then better timeframe.
Okay. What's the, you know, if there's like a maximum amount you could pay for these?
Oh, that, I think we can be flexible with, so like I said, we will have some funding as well, so it's a, we are a non-profit, but we will be giving some funding for that, so I guess probably depending on what you guys are working to get, I think we can call it out or something. That's gonna help benefit the school.
And would there be somebody that would be panning the facility at all times during the hours and it would be in operation?
Yes, correct, yes, um, you know, I'd probably be there for a lot of it as well, you know, in any work that we have, like that's working at the facility. Would be background checks, it's not like, you know, we're not gonna go in with that just as a, just a average person.
How about the people that would come into the buildings? Would they be required to take, be a background check?
If that is necessary, yeah.
And how many days a week?
You know, honestly, right now, you'd start out at very minimal, probably just like a one or two days a week. So it wouldn't be like a all, every day, you know, five, six days a week type thing, probably just one or two days a week for now. And then from there, you know, as I get, as things grow, and before we'd actually expand anything, we'd actually, you know, present it to you as well, to make sure it works with the school system.
And have you done this in other places, other districts?
We have not, this is the first one that we're actually doing, setting forth, kind of as a model. And like I said, it's more geared for, it helps the community out, helping out the community to develop better, helping people that are living within the community.
Would it be for just the people of the Falls community?
Correct.
Just the community, sir, I mean, it'll just entail our community only?
Correct. And like I said, anything, if there'd be any changes whatsoever, we always get before the school board to make sure we get actually met up with what you guys.
Could it be twelve months out later, you wanna do it summer too?
Um, I think ideally, yes, um, I mean, like I said, we can be flexible on some of these things.
How soon can this program be put in place, I don't know, how long does it take to?
I mean, depending, you know, because we have to get, you know, obviously all the equipment and put it in place, such as our computer equipment and whatnots. Um, you know, if it were fairly quick, then we could implement it. I'd say probably within like a six to eight period in the other one.
Is this something, as we look into a little bit more about the program that you've been involved in, and just talk about some of the days and days? Is it something that could maybe start in the fall, or are you guys looking to do something like right away?
We're looking to see the better, but, you know, like I said, we're flexible with that as well. Because I know, you know, obviously through the school system, it takes time to look into that, so we are flexible with that.
Is there any other programs out there that you're trying to model that we can kind of get reference?
There, there are several that I'd say we're taking a little bit from, they're not gonna be identical. Uh, one of the, I've got several, uh, and, I mean, with them, I'd say there's some things that we just might not come close to doing, just because of, not, not what we're looking for, uh, but like Oak Hill Collaborative, they do some different processes where they'll have people come in, you know, design a computer, they build a computer basically from scratch, and things like that, and they learn how to do some of those things. So like hands-on type things like that. Uh, but we're gonna gear more, you know, like I said, financial literacy to start, things such as computer skills. Some of these, learn how to do like a, any of your Microsoft Office products, you know, teach them to try and do that. More things are gonna help them become more job-ready, uh, and that's where we're actually working with the state, you know, like job and family services, to help people, you know, get ready for jobs, prepare for jobs, know what jobs are out there. Uh, if you don't know how to do a resume, we teach them how to do that, you know, and kind of expand on from there.
Why, why targeted Newt Falls?
Um, well, number one, my daughter attends here, so, you know, that's one of the reasons. Um, and I think Newt Falls is a great community, um, have some family members that live in Newt Falls, uh, so kind of being in and out of Newt Falls for the majority of my life, fireworks display, where else are you gonna go? Yeah. You know, and, and, you know, good friends with, um, with the mayor here, Mayor Klein, um, I've spoken with David Lynch, City Manager David Lynch, and, uh, you know, we've kind of ran through some of this, and they thought, hey, this is a good idea, while we're in the, while I've kind of presented the school board, so we started talking about places that we can possibly start this, uh, and, uh, and actually David Lynch said, well, you know, maybe this, you know, the school, because it does have a facility here, and being that there are classrooms there, that might be an ideal place. Not that, not that this would be the only place, I mean, there, you know, it would be possible to do elsewhere, if necessary.
So how much of the building, sir, are you looking at, or?
I, I would say probably, you know, to start, maybe just like three rooms, three to five rooms would be more than sufficient. Uh, and really to start, probably, probably two or three just to start, you know, so it wouldn't be a, a major amount of space, um, just depending on, you know, what's available, you know, what we can work with.
What's the criteria for someone to be able to come and take these classes?
Um, really, there's not a whole lot of criteria, it's not like, it's not like it'd be a high school graduate or anything like that. Um, it could even be like, you know, a, a family coming in, just wanting to learn some things, and wanting to do something together, almost like a community type activity. Where if they want to bring their, their family and young kids, if they could actually come and work together, learn some computer skills together, uh, learn, you know, just, just a whole number of things, you know, so we're just looking at the different ways to, you know, kind of build a community. I, I think a strong community is ideal, uh, and that's something that we're lacking in our society. And, you know, since that's kind of like the goal here, is kind of really working together. Get a community working together, I think that just makes a stronger community, and it helps the community prosper.
So as long as they're a Newt Falls resident of the Newt Falls community?
Yes.
There's not anything likely related to their income or anything like that, anybody can come?
Yep, anyone can come, it doesn't matter, uh, social status, like where they're at economically, it doesn't matter, you know, what they, they really do for work or anything like that, the other's, you know, criteria.
So are they free program, or are they paid?
They are free program, free programs, yes.
And you've, that, you have done this before, or you haven't done?
I have not, this is our first step, yeah. Uh, you know, I have taught in the past, I, you know, I actually taught at Victory Christian Schools, and, you know, it's a, and, uh, my wife and I have been in business for years, uh, so this is a way of just kind of coming into the community and actually, uh, getting involved with a community, a smaller community, and saying, you know, how can we make, make the community better? How can we, you know, do something for our community, actually, uh, help kind of just build people up, help, uh, expand their minds, help them, uh, maybe gain some insight that they just haven't gained in life and, uh, move on forward.
Any estimates on how many you could have signed up right now, if you wanted to start up right now?
Um, right now, I, I think we really haven't promoted it a whole lot within the community, because number one, we need a place. So before we, you know, really push it real hard, you know, you know, I, I don't think you're gonna have a classroom like, you know, thirty, forty people, you know, looking for something like this. It's gonna be more like smaller groups, um, coming in, and it could be, you know, it could be a smaller, it could be like, you know, ten people at a time, or whatever. We want to make sure, number one, that it's secure at all times, uh, number two, that, that, you know, school property is not, you know, being taken advantage of, not, not being vandalized, not, you know, so, you know, those are kind of keys that we're looking at as well. So I think a smaller group is kind of, kind of good, so you don't have any problems that just kind of run away with you.
Do we also have any questions to follow up? Well, this is something new for us here, so we'll have discussion about it.
Okay.
Probably want more information from you as we do a deep dive.
Okay.
Once the board's here, and then we'll get back to it.
That sounds good, yeah, and if you have any questions, you can come in, or if you send anything, just let me know. And, uh, we're more than happy to get any information. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Crow?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Brian Crow, two four seven Elizabeth Street, uh, here in town. I'm here tonight because I have attempted now for the last, you know, handful of years, couple of years at least, to participate in, if not on a volunteer basis, with the Newt Falls High School baseball team, and have been stopped short at every turn. And I still, to this day, have no real reason or understanding why. Uh, I've done nothing wrong, uh, I've not committed any kind of crimes or penalties, or, um, I would not attack or threaten anybody, not use foul language. I've spoke my mind, um, and addressed certain people, I've spoken with the principal of the school, and as, as of right now, everything stops with him. He's not recommended me, even though I've been asked to coach and have gotten the blessing and approval of the head coach Chad, Chad Rankin. I know his wife is the assistant principal here as well. I've spoken with Mr. Crowder several times, you know, Mr. Woodard, you've actually refused to speak with me a, a couple, a couple different times, um, not even knowing what I actually called for. I spoke with Jerry, um, she answered the phone and said you were directing me to speak with Mr. Crowder, even though you didn't even know what I was calling for. I find that kind of odd, um, and also the fact that even now, still, um, I've not gotten a recommendation to, to volunteer, not even a paid position, but to volunteer with the high school baseball team. This time last year, I was actually in the running to be the head coach, I was a paid coach, uh, and according to Mr. Crowder, which I spoke with at length several times, he himself has said, stated very clearly, that when I was an employee here at the school, I was an exemplary employee, I had no issues. He stated that his issue with me was that there was some kind of a loyalty issue. I don't know what that means, I don't know what a loyalty issue means, I've been one of the most loyal Newton Falls residents, taxpayers, parents. I've been highly involved with the school, uh, always though, I've taken pictures of the logo that's hanging out in the lunchroom right now, like I took that picture, like that. I helped, Tom and I, you know, were there, did that. I called the football games, I don't know how much more loyal I can be to the school. If I have to be loyal to every single person's ideas, that's not fair, um, and I just want to volunteer, I just want to help the kids out. My son is a senior on the, on the baseball team this year, and this is gonna be the second year now that I'm not gonna be allowed to participate, or even be around these kids, and I don't know why. And I'd like an answer, an explanation from somebody here, if somebody can tell me why I'm not, why I've not been recommended, even though the coach has given me as a per one his blessing. I have passed every background check, I've got everything in order that needs to be in order, gone directly through the, um, athletic director himself. Uh, everything's been turned in, uh, and again, I'm just, right now, I just came out, this is my last ditch effort, baseball, the official baseball season is getting ready to start here very soon, I have not been able to participate in any open gyms, I, even though I had the blessing of the principal before, I had the blessing prior to this situation, uh, and I just would like, I would love some answers, I would love if somebody could tell me why I've not been allowed to participate with my son's baseball team. A team that I coached, most of these kids are on the team this year, I coached as the, I was the JV head baseball coach, and then the following year was in the running to be the head coach, and got passed over, and now here we are. So I would love it if you guys, if anybody can give me an explanation of a legitimate reason why I can't volunteer, why I can't be around the baseball team, and why I can't help and participate with my son's.
It's three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
It's three minutes. Do we have any further from the board, left over this time?
Do you have any comment, Mr. Woodard?
I would just say that, uh, when it comes to coaching, Mr. Crow, we just, the head coach or whoever's in charge of the program will make recommendations to the principal, the principal then will take that and make a recommendation to me, I make the recommendation to the board. That's the process that we follow for every sport.
So can you, can you tell me why, that was it?
That's all I can tell you.
So no explanation, no explanation at all, that's a no line, for the second year, okay?
I'm not gonna put words in it, it's just.
No, I, thank you, I understand, that's really all I wanted to hear, that there's no reason why I could, thank you folks, I appreciate that.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board?
Colasimo? I'm Colasimo, four one nine six, Carson Salzmann's Road. Um, I met with Mr. Woodard last week, and we scheduled a date on March sixteenth with USDA and NRCS, which is the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, Conservation Service, to have their civil engineer, Troy Smith, to come out and map a community trail on a school's wooded property. We have already met with him and did a walkthrough with him, Mr. Crowder, and Mr. McGlynn, and myself, to get a lay of the land. He would mark accordingly as to avoid the lower wet areas that we identified and saw on our walkthrough, and keep a buffer near the residential properties along one section, and a buffer along the area for a future baseball field. This has to be done before the foliage comes out in the spring and interferes with satellite signal needed when marking and mapping the trail. Then when the ground dries up, we can go back there and actually clear the path of underbrushed saplings and roots. Mr. Crowder has a bulldozer, and Amy Crowder's brother has equipment as well that is available. We also have an individual that will make a stump grinder available for any roots that would be a trip hazard along the trail. Another individual has offered wood chips that can be laid down for any section along the trail that might be damp. All this can be done without cutting any large trees. All this will be done at no cost to the school, and is being done by volunteers, donations of equipment, and man-hours. We hope to have this done sometime this summer, fall, for the community to enjoy.
I know, uh, the day that Tom came out and walked the woods with Mr. Crowder and Mr. McGlynn, I had to go to an SST, a state meeting. I wasn't here, but I did meet with Mr. Colasimo here just a few weeks ago, and, uh, told him it was fine if this gentleman came out with him, and they walked the woods, and they made markings for walking trails, and put those up. And then we talked about, a little bit about timeline as far as when things like this could happen, obviously, it would have to be fairly dry for us to be able to get like a bulldozer or something back there in the, in the future, uh, to make walking trails, but if we had them marked off and stuff, that would be, um, I think a step in the right direction. I think Mr. Powell's even said, I think he's been back there, he played back there as a kid a lot, I think he told us that there's, there's some, uh, there's some trails back there already that you can kind of see, and we talked about it earlier in the year, um, the Cub Scouts and different organizations that went back there and put signs in on the walking trails, and things of that nature, so. Uh, this will be a step going forward, what we want to do in the, in the long term. Uh, this doesn't get us real close to putting cross-country trails back in there any time soon, things like that. Obviously, for us to be able to put out a plan for a baseball field, cross-country trails, stuff like that back in there, number one, we're gonna have to pass some levies, a PI levy for sure, to be able to use to back in there, we're gonna have to do the two renewal levies here coming up on March seventeenth. And, um, we right now don't really have PI money to use for that kind of stuff, so we don't have the money to use for that stuff. The free stuff's great, we can get some of that free stuff going on back there with marking the trails, and then, uh, down the road, we can discuss what we can do as far as starting to make trails for, walking trails for people. You know, that would be a step in the right direction in the near future. But, um, as far as fields and cross-country trails, stuff like that, uh, before we can even really set our minds in going in that direction. We have to pass these two renewal levies on March seventeenth, and then we're gonna have to have a PI levy for permanent improvement, uh, conditions. And we don't have one of those right now, so the only thing we have is money that goes with the middle school, and that dries up in twenty twenty-three, and it's very restricted what we can do with that, so. But, uh, I asked, I told Tom to come out that day and, uh, go ahead, and we can work the areas back there, and I'll try to get back there when I can. If I get back there on that day, I'll try to go back with him and take a look at it myself.
Mr. President, can you address?
Yes.
Um, on that as well, I would, I think I talked with you, you know, I'm thrilled with this, and I'd like to see some perennial gardens go in, and I'm sure you saw my tree log with the flowers that everybody has seemed to embrace. Um, do you remember the gentleman who we talked to from O S H A A about the cross-country trail that they would come out? And all of this is contingent upon, we've got to pass the renewals, else we just can't move forward. But do you, was it Mr. Brown, Mr.?
Lou Brown?
Lou Brown? And I think, um, as long as these levies pass, and we can get a small PI, you know, we can start making it happen. But I'd also like to make it a, a, a matrix event where we involve our biology, and, um, you know, select plants and, and things so that it could just fortify, and then get that, that running trail. But I, I think we need, get the levies passed first, and then get ahold of, of him. Were you to call him last, or was I? Do we remember?
I think you asked me to call him when we're discussing the cross-country trail.
Okay.
But because the levies didn't pass.
Right.
Uh, we had, we had stopped.
Called up on that, okay, all right, I'll see if I can resurrect some of that information and see if we can get things moving. You also talked to somebody out at the, um, Garfield base, is that?
Yes, Major Robinson.
Okay.
He said if we needed manpower, he would, he'd make us people available to come out and help if we needed it.
And that's to help with the community walking trail?
Yes.
And possibly, if things go well for the community, because again, it's nothing new, just renew, you know, keep, keep us on tr, on track here. But that would also possibly help with developing a state-of-the-art cross-country trail, correct? And they're willing to help on that?
Yeah, with man-hours, my daughter's equipment, we got that.
Correct, well, you can use my little bulldozer. Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any else who'd like to address the board?
You will?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, I'm Tom Gregory, of fifty-nine North Hazelwood on the west side of Youngstown, so I'm not even a member of your community. Um, Tom Colasimo and I have been talking, and, uh, I was here at a school board meeting at the, at the end of last year, uh, and I spoke with Paul Woodard about a proposal I had to get the public information on about your school board, about your meetings and your levies that you need passed. He suggested, you know, you wait till after the first of the year, because you've got an election, you've got new officers coming in in your school board, a new president coming in, so we waited, Tom contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and said, hey, we've got a meeting coming up, would you be willing to come in? Sure, I'd come in, no problem, would you bring a camera and shoot it? Well, yeah, sure, no problem, camera's here. Um, you'll see the footage, and you'll see that it's not sufficient for a good quality recording. You're not gonna hear the voices being heard clear enough, most of all because myself, I can hear the air conditioner, and the heater, and the fans. And you just can't hear the voices clearly, you need microphones put out, stuff like that. But the reason I suggest you do this is to get the public the proper information. Anyone can say anything they want on social media, and I'm sure you know, there is a lot of misinformation out there on social media about your levies, what you need, why you need, how you need, what you're gonna do with it, what you're not gonna do with it, all of this stuff. And anybody could throw a rumor up out there, and if you don't respond with proper, correct information, and counter that false information that you believe is false information, you're doomed. So that's why I suggest, on, on the papers that I, I gave you there, a two-step approach. One is, of course, broadcast these meetings, because let the public know exactly what's going on. When we started doing that for Newton Falls City Council, the response is amazing, good and bad, but it's response. Everybody's engaged, everybody's active, and everyone knows exactly what is going on, for the most part. Um, the others, the other, uh, part of that that I suggest is we do some social media news blurbs, for example. Um, if there's a certain comment anybody might make, or a certain question, or a concern, well, they've got enough money, why do they need another levy? Okay, well, give me some direct answers to that. Uh, for example, Mrs. Stenber, we can interview you, and you'd say, well, I know this is out there on social media, but let me tell you what the real facts of the case are, here's the numbers, here's how it breaks down. And publicize all of this stuff, all over Facebook, all over any social media you can, we would be happy to broadcast them on Newton Falls Television, on the Community Access Channel, at no, no cost for the airtime, of course, I've already talked to Dave Lynch, and that's good to go there. Um, but the more publicized you are, the more transparent you are, the better the public is going to like what you're doing and agree, like, oh, okay, I see what these people are doing, they do have our best interest, they are being transparent, they are being factual and honest with us, I'm gonna support what they need. That's how I feel about it, so anyway, that's my time, um, any questions, please?
How much?
Yes, how much, of course, yes. Um, it all depends on how much student involvement we could have. Um, the more student involvement, the cheaper it is for you, obviously. Um, I envisioned a three-man crew, a three-person crew, sorry, a three-person crew for this minimum. And it would be myself and two students, or myself and two paid crew members. Um, so that's where your cost is gonna go up. I envision a three-camera setup for these to do it properly. One camera as a wide on the whole table, one camera floating, so we get close-up shots of whoever's talking, and one camera back in that corner, focused this way to shoot whoever's speaking for public comments, so that's all heard. I would say you need a minimum of four microphones on this table, and one microphone here for a public speaker. So microphone between the two, between the two, at the corner, and one for your superintendent there. Um, so you need an audio operator, you need another, at least one camera operator, and myself as the director, I house the equipment out in the hallway, run some wires and cables around. Um, it would be, I know it may sound scary, but it's very inimpressive, it's very, like, selective. Um, one of the comments that I get a lot about my productions is, oh, we didn't even see the cameras. I'd love that, I'm not here to be seen. There's a reason I run the camera, because I don't want to be on camera, so I want to be, hide, I like to hide behind the camera. I'm a drummer, because I hide behind the drums, so, you know, that whole kind of thing. Um, so yes, there are costs involved, um, your minimum cost is gonna be about three hundred per school board meeting. And it could go up from there, depending upon how much student involvement we get or we don't get. And, um, I've tried to get student involvement for the football games, for the basketball games, for the, uh, the winter concert that we did with the, with the bands, and I've had zero student involvement, and I'm not trying to call out anyone who's in charge of those video programs at your school. Uh, I think it's a matter of the students have jobs in the afternoons and the evenings, or the students had other things they were already involved with. For example, the football games, all of the students in the video, in the broadcast media program were either cheerleaders, band members, or football players. Well, they can't run cameras then, they can't do audio graphics at a football game, so obviously they couldn't do it. Um, and the same scenario kind of played out with the basketball games that we produced, and especially the school concert, most of the kids were in the band. So we couldn't have students involved there, but as many students as would like to be, I'd say they don't have to be involved in your video programs at the school. Could be any student at all that wants to be involved. Could be any student at all that wants to be involved. Every person on the crew is well-fed, so I feed my crew no matter what age they are out of my own pocket. So all the kids are gonna eat pizza or Arby's or something like that. And I try and appreciate them and make them feel wanted. And they're gonna gain as much knowledge as they can about broadcast television, 'cause I love what I do. I think it's great. I think everybody should be involved in it. It's just wonderful. Next question, if any.
What's the contract structure? Is it, you have to sign up for twelve months?
Um, I prefer a seasonal contract because obviously, well, then again, I don't know about your school board. I know Youngstown City, they have no meetings in the summer. Do you have school board meetings in the summer? Okay, well, then it would be a twelve-month item, yeah. Um, I would suggest we go, if you wanted to start, we start and have a contract until your school season starts, in the first day of school. At the first day of school in twenty twenty, in the fall, that's when we start a new contract, should you want to continue. So we go year by year with the school year. That's what I would suggest. As far as the, we'll call it the blitz campaign because your election is coming up very soon. That's a short-term item. That would be a charge per video, depending upon how many video snippets you wanted to put out there for social media and the Newton Falls Television Channel. As much as you want to promote it and get your message out the way you want it out there. Because everyone could talk about everything they wanna say. For example, you and I are talking and someone could put on social media, all they did is stare at the guy. He didn't even talk to him that much. Well, that's true, because I'm talking the most of the time. So, you know, anybody could say anything they want, which might sound true, but it's the way they're slanting it. Major news media does that. They slant things the way they want. You know, Fox News is Republican slant, all the others are Democrat slant. But get your message out the way you want it put out there from your own words. I feel it's the best way to be as transparent and as honest as you can and get your message out there. Yes, ma'am?
Because obviously the levies that we have on are because we need to be able to maintain and keep running this school.
Yes.
I am somewhat in favor of this because I think it could have a positive swing.
Oh, I think it could have very positive.
But with all of that being said, would you consider, since this is February headed quickly into March,
Yes.
a trial basis instead of entering into, say, a six-month or a twelve-month contract? A trial basis to see, because if there is no levies, there's no way that we can go, I mean, we can keep going forward.
This is true. This is true, yes.
So is that something that you would at least consider or think about?
Sure, I would consider that, yeah. That's not a problem. How many school board meetings do you have before your election comes up? And I apologize, I don't know your election cycle here.
We won't have any.
You won't have any?
Right. That's why when you said blurb, I'm thinking.
Yeah. Well, then I would say, um, we don't need to worry about contract for school board meeting production. You could worry about that after the election and then we'll revisit that idea and see, okay, our levy's passed and now we really wanna do this and we could justify the funding of this, so let's do it. Or our, our levies didn't pass, we're really hurting, we can't very well spend money on this when we're cutting other programs at the school. It just doesn't seem right. And I would agree with you, it wouldn't be right. So at that time, you'd say, well, thanks but no thanks, can't do it.
When you're talking blurbs or that kind of thing, like, can you possibly throw a small ballpark number on what you're talking blurbs and the seconds involved?
Sure, that would be a two-to-three-minute video interview with someone from the school board. Pick a topic, um, and I'll, I'll ask you right now, can you give me a topic that is in discussion or debate about why you need or don't need your money for your levies? Give me, can, I'm serious, I don't know the topic, so does anyone?
The two renewals that we have on March seventeenth.
Yes.
One began in nineteen ninety-one and the other began in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
And those pay for our daily operations. And if we don't have those two renewals, which are not new taxes,
Yeah.
the cuts that we've made already, which have been severe, get even deeper.
Even worse.
Yes.
Okay, well, there's your first topic. These are not new taxes. This is nothing, anything is going to pay on top of what they're paying now.
Right.
This is a renewal, so in other words, if you pass this, you will see nothing. You'll see no change. In other words, we won't cut any programs, but your taxes aren't gonna go up either for this, for this renewal, for this part, part of it. So there's the first topic of our video right there. We would interview someone from the board, talking to the camera, explaining that to the public and get that message out there in the best way. And that would be a scripted interview. In other words, rehearse it, write it out exactly how you wanna say it. I have teleprompter, we'll put a teleprompter right in front of the camera, read the words. And take as many takes as you want because it would be live TV, so. Oh, I screwed that up. No problem, we'll do it over again. But memory cards are cheap, no problem. I would say you're anywhere two hundred, two hundred and fifty per segment, per little news blurb that you wanna put out there. Yeah, video snippet. That is far below normal production cost. But I like Newton Falls. I've been involved for a whole year now. Dave Lynch got me involved about a year ago, uh, doing all the Newton Falls stuff. Newton Falls is very hometown and I love that. They love to promote themselves, they love to see themselves on TV, of course. And they love to promote themselves in any way they can, and I love that. I mean, I'm, I'm coming from Youngstown while the school board is, I'm sorry, it's a joke. It's just, it's so.
Are you recording?
Yes, I am, yeah. But if you notice, I'm not on camera. Notice that, yeah, I, I'm. And the recording, though, is a side note, you will hear my voice dominantly on camera because I'm so close. That's why we need microphones close to your voices. So we're not picking up room noise and echo and the sounds of the HVAC system there.
What, what, um, channels or what resources would, let's say we did two or three three-minute videos paid for with our levy committee money? Um, what resources or would they be going out on, uh, local TV channels, what?
They would be on the Newton Falls official Facebook page, the city of Newton Falls page. They would be on the Newton Falls Community Access Channel. Probably run them at the beginning and the end of the city council meetings to help you. And they would be on any social media platform you want. I would suggest if you have your own Facebook pages, share it, post it. Ask everybody you know to share it. If the schools and community page will let you put it on there, put it on there. Anywhere and everywhere you could do that, please do that. I'll even put them on my own. Not that I don't, don't know if it'll do any good, but I would do that for you.
The, the two, two fifty, um, would that be around the same price to do something where we could pull in some of our teachers or some of our administrators and, and do, you know, the same type of thing? Or just seeing them like in action, like to build a human?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Touch to?
Yeah. Per finished production, two fifty, about a three-minute video. Uh, that's where we're at. That's probably a third of what it should cost, uh, for regular production rates. But you're a nonprofit group, you know, you're, you're a, a public entity, and I know you're not a major corporation. My other client is General Motors, and they have the money. They pay full, full production rates. They do safety and training videos for, well, I did them for Lordstown, I'm still doing them for Palmer, but, um, playing Cleveland. And those clients, you know, no problem. They're, they're okay. You get what you can get. If I came in here and told you, oh, seven hundred and fifty dollars per three-minute segment, I would assume you'd say, hey, thanks but no thanks, sorry, we can't do it, thanks for coming. And I know that. So I make it as affordable as I can, but still, I can't afford to work for free. So, um, if we, if you knew you wanted to do, to do three of them, for example, I would say, okay, can we schedule them all on the same day? So we would do yours and then we do yours and then we do yours. If you were hypothetically, we were the three people, shoot them all in one day, get them all done and release them. We release one and then three days later, release another one. Three days later, release another one. So you're not flooding the public with all your information at once, but they're getting fresh information on a continual basis.
With the time factor being so short,
Yes.
can you pull that off?
If we shot them tomorrow, they would be ready by tomorrow evening. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not that hard. I don't wanna say I'm, because I'm so good, but when you've been at this game so long, I've been in production for thirty-one years now. You get good at what you do. I can't do what you individually do because you're good at what you do. Well, I'm very good at what I do. And I could pull this off rather quickly and very professionally.
Tom, if you had students helping you do the board meetings,
Yes.
would you be paying them like an hourly rate or a set rate or anything like that? How would that work?
I don't know.
Would you be looking for volunteers?
Am I allowed to pay them? The reason I ask this, I was working with Fitch High School for a few years. They just installed a video board in their stadium. And the high school students were involved in those productions. And I didn't get in trouble, but I was told that, no, 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 you can't pay them. They're school students and they're in a video class. You can't pay them. And that would have been a major problem for them, so I didn't pay them, but I fed them.
You fed them?
Uh, I, yeah, they, they ate very well, yes.
So do you need the same students all the time or can they kind of rotate between so many?
As many as we could get. I would be glad to rotate them. I'd be glad to have the same ones. Whatever we could get, that's fine. I will put the students where they're suited best. If you've got a student on camera that really just like, he's unsure or she is unsure of themselves and they're just not good on camera, don't get the idea of zooming in, zooming out, focus, proper framing and, and composing a shot. Okay, Suzie, you're just not good at that, but I'm gonna have you on audio because you got a really good ear. So you could hear noise and you could distinguish things, so you put the students where they're best. And still teach them and let them learn. And if a student really loved what, what we're doing here and they wanted to direct, by all means, I'll step aside, I'll oversee it and let them call cameras, one, two, and three, and, and order the crew around. We have a twelve-year-old kid that goes to church with me and he's the pastor's son. And he took to this stuff. He runs a four-camera production at our church every Sunday, a live stream. Four cameras with graphics, mixing audio, bringing in scriptures on screens, lower thirds, everything. He runs the whole show. So kids can do it.
Jody, since you happen to be posed back there, is, do you see any volunteers or yes in the C or the B? CBI program?
Just listening to him talking, my eighth graders are not able to take gym class because they take my classes.
Yes.
So if they were able to do this as their job instead of taking up a period at school, that would bring them to take the gym class instead of taking the freshman year.
Even though they're not going to be paid per se?
They don't get paid now.
Okay. I'm just touching all the points I can think of.
Like ninth and tenth graders, um, a lot of them work within the building, they don't have transportation out there and then, you know, this is something that they're.
And since this is an intervention program that you manned, the hope would be that maybe somebody would have an interest spark that would flip that switch and draw them.
And I obviously don't know anything about this for a second, but I have a young man who is so amazing on computer that I can get somebody to, oh, why even do your work?
Yeah.
Because he can do all kinds of stuff and it just is phenomenal. So.
And in fact, one of the cameras that I would use for this is, they call it a PTZ camera, which stands for pan tilt zoom. It's motorized camera, it sits right in the, it will sit right in the middle. And you'll see it's a little, about that big, and it's motorized. It's gonna go this way to get all the different people that are on the school board. So I don't have a human being standing here in the middle blocking everybody's view. That camera is operated and controlled by an Xbox controller. So if a student knows how to do a video game, which students don't, um, they could run that camera.
I think that's piece is hot.
Yeah. Okay. And I'll be here, I'm gonna keep rolling on your meeting, so you'll have the full meeting and a record, and I'll hand you that file. I will send that file to somebody. I'd ask for an email address after the meeting. I'll get an email address from you. I will send you the video file and it would be your choice whether you think, the quality's pretty good, let's, let's broadcast this, let's, let's release this. And at that point, you'll have a link to download the video or you tell me where you want it uploaded to. I'd be happy to put it on my own YouTube page or even the Newton Falls page. And we could promote it from there, just share the link with everybody if you want to. So that, but I would want you to view it first for the quality aspect of it. But after that, understand that every school board meeting that we do is live on air. So whatever's said, it's out there. There's no editing, there's no, oh, we gotta take that out, well, too late. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, no problem.
I think that's it for the public session. We'll move on, please. We'll start with student achievement. Mrs. Stepper, this is focus.
Um, I was gonna say, I was supposed to be getting an email from someone, correct? I've not received any from for that. I'm just getting an email for.
Oh, you mean for the troubled career and technical center report?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Mrs. Davis, she said she was gonna send it to any one of the.
She, the only thing she said to me this, this time was how many students we had enrolled, how much it was costing us. And how is it, so that was quite a bit. I think we're a little over fifty students and just north of two hundred and eighty thousand, I believe.
Um, I'm new at this, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with my thoughts here and just share. In our packets, we received, um, all the list of the honorable. Pretty impressive, a lot of four-point-os.
It's just basically in the past, what they do is just review the information that are in the letters from the principals, just review some of that.
Okay.
And if there's information like you just said, several people on the honorable, that kind of thing, mention that. But you, you don't have to pick everything in the letters, but maybe pick up one or two things, review it from each building.
Please don't read it all.
No, here we go.
If you wanna get copies.
Just pass it out to us. That would be fine, too.
Pretty, pretty impressive, um, honor rolls. I was proud to see that. Um, something that I was really impressed with, I have to find it in here, is the Lexia. Um, I'm, let's just look it up.
Hold on.
Is it on March? Um, the, the Lexia update. I was impressed with the, the progress in all the grade levels. Um, that's pretty significant growth, um, that the kids are all showing.
Lexia is a, it's a reading software program that helps kids, um, go from one level to the next that we started using last year.
Builds in their, their gaps and their.
They like it a lot.
Um, so I was, I was impressed with that. Something else, um, the PBIS, everybody's trained on that now, is what I understood?
We're still training some.
We're still training, okay.
Different people are in different intervals on the PBIS training.
I'm gonna kind of jump off of what the principal said here. Yesterday, we went to a training for new board members. And that's what I was planning on sharing. I, I wanna, I, I'm thankful for the opportunity that we got to go. I mean, there was lots of things that were talked about and student achievement was one of those. And I'm hoping that we can have a, um, a work session and really kind of dig into understanding, um, where we're at with the chief manager, who we're going to go and have a go.
Um, we have a letter or packet, um, saying that, so Ohio Department of Education has named Newton Falls Elementary School a two thousand and nineteen high progress school of honor based on our building, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Ohio School of Report Card measures on student English, Language, Arts, and Math performance. So that was pretty good that we got that.
I think that's extraordinary.
Extraordinary.
Yeah, I think the improvements that they're doing down in the elementary school, we're, we're seeing the results right, right here in Report Card, and that's, that's something that we should be blasting out to the public. But, uh, in the, in the past, at Report Card, you know, we're struggling for fifteen years. Now we're, we're seeing improvements, so this is great to see this, and this is from government to water, so, um,
it's been some good things. That's just been, sorry, we accomplished this for the, over the last five years, so.
We, uh, we did receive another award that I'll bring up at the March. We, uh, we did receive another award that I'll bring up at the March meeting. And I may have Mrs. Witt try to come to that March meeting, discuss some of the achievements, things that are going on at the K-5 building. Possibly, Mrs. Wright and Mr. Crowder come to one of the next meetings after that.
We'll move on to legislative meetings. Uh, Mrs. Crowder, Mrs. Oaks.
Um, just piggybacking on what Mrs. Stumper had said, we, we were at the Trumbull County Educational Service Center for the new board members. Um, kind of their initial foot dipping into the water. And, um, it was, uh, good to see a, a lot of the new ones there. Um, I'm not new, but I felt privileged and always inspired to see the energy in the room. Um, with, with the new ones coming on and trying to get a little bit of information under their belt. We had Cheryl Ryan present, and, uh, God bless her, she said after two months, you guys are still here! And I was like, yes! And then there are some that have been there a little longer, and, um, we questioned whether we should, um, request a psyche valve for those people. But they passed on that and granted me.
Sanity.
Sanity, yeah. And, um, so it, it, it touched in some of the places that I know that we need to improve. And also, you know, working together and moving, keep moving forward, keep changing. Everything is always evolving and changing, and we're always striving to do better. Um, and on that note, we have, uh, the Northeast Spring Conference for OSBA coming up. I'm registered for that conference. It is, it's always nice when it's in York County, and it's low, it is on Elm Road at, I say this wrong, DeLucia? DeLucia.
DeLucia.
DeLucia. And the food is wonderful. Usually the meeting is tremendous. I have went for the last two years. And, um, I encourage all board members, if you can go, get your reservations in by calling, uh, the central office, ask Jerry to register you.
Or if you know you wanna go, let me know tonight and, um.
Julie and I are things like Jerry's.
Oh, very good.
Put the form on her desk.
Awesome.
Okay. So, um, and it, it, it starts to get you introduced into many things that OSBA has to offer to educate new board members. I, a lot of people come on and they're just shell shocked because they were going to come in and do this. And all of a sudden, the law says, can't do it that way, and they're like, why? So it's just, it's a wonderful tool. Um, we're very fortunate to have such a strong, um, educational service center, you know, in Trumbull County. They're just so helpful and, uh, so good rooted. So if you can make that conference, please do, and we'll get you geared up to do Capitol Conference in November. So make sure you check your calendar and don't plan any getaways for those weekends, because you need to go.
Well, there were, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Danny. There were treasurers and some superintendents. Are they allowed to go to that?
To?
This one that we're doing as well?
The one that Josh? Uh, they can, sure, they can, and you'll see, you'll see, um, some that go, some that, you know, have other pressing issues, they can't. You'll see them at Capitol Conference, even though it says for board members, it is all encompassing, so.
Yeah, it was, um, there were sort of treasurers there, there were some superintendents there, uh. And then, you know, the one.
Patron. The one board mem, there were two board members that had over fifteen years of experience there. And, uh.
Guess who won of all?
Yeah, and, uh, the other gentleman had twenty.
Seven.
Twenty-seven years. He was the one I questioned about the psyche valve. So, anyway, uh, good information for, for us, so that's all that I have at the moment.
We'll move on to finance committee. Mrs. Crowder, Mrs. Major.
In the transition with our new treasurer sitting in the, uh, audience, Mr. Armstrong, who we're thrilled to have come aboard. Um, obviously, we haven't had a, a financial sit-down meeting because we have one treasurer who's serving two communities. And probably is afraid at both ends. We also have the new treasurer who's still maintaining two jobs, who's probably afraid of both ends. And we have five board members in the middle with a superintendent that are playing ping pong, so we will get there. And, um, hopefully, um, we can develop a finance committee, more so than just these two board members. That will be able to maybe extend our mission statement and our vision out into the community, which will help bring more people on board with a little more transparency. So.
We'll move on to athletic council. I don't think we have a date put out there yet.
No, we don't have a date, per se. I was just gonna let you know that our girls' first round of their tournament starts Saturday at one o'clock here. They'll host that. And then the boys' first round of the tournament will be next Friday, the twenty-eighth here at seven o'clock. They'll host that. So one o'clock Saturday, girls, that's the twenty-second. Boys, seven P.M., the twenty-eighth here, most lovely, host the first round.
And the boys did achieve.
I was saying, their?
Uh, league title.
Yes.
And they broke the record for the most runs.
For regular season.
For regular season.
Nineteen.
With nineteen, so.
And I think that's the first championship, uh, league championship since two thousand and nine.
Correct, yeah.
It's terrific.
So those are a pretty good, pretty good run. So we just look forward to, um, the meeting, um, probably before, hopefully before spring, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to touch base soon to get something, so.
Uh, we'll move on to personnel. Um, just to bring up, we have a treasurer transitioning out, and we have a new treasurer transitioning in. Appreciate the time they're putting in to make this all happen. You know, it's not easy holding down two jobs. Uh, like, like I said, we appreciate guys putting in time to, to make this as smooth as possible for us.
If I may, she's been, uh, uh, she probably comes.
Excellent, excellent. Um, negotiations.
Nothing to report there at the.
Nothing on the horizon yet for that, but probably come again soon. Um, uh, Trumbull County Career Technical, like I said, it was in a couple of things that Debbie sent me. It was just the total number of students and how much we need to pay, uh, for their services. And then we'll move on to board minutes.
Your Page Three and Page Four might be reversed if you look at the top. I don't, mine was. If you turn Page Three, and then go back to Four, they're reversed.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the treasurer of schools, the Newton Falls Board of Education, approve the minutes from the January sixteenth regular meeting, January twenty-fifth special meeting, January twenty-eighth special meeting, and February sixth special meeting.
So that, so may Mrs. Crowder have a second?
What's up?
Second. Mrs. Stumper, any discussion? Local.
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stumper?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes. Treasurers' reports and recommendations.
Um, first off, I would like to thank everyone for your support, and everyone has been wonderful since the day I got here, so. The transition is challenging, but Terry has been great, you know, we get together when we can, and, and I'm totally available for him to reach out to once I've transitioned out. So I do appreciate everything. Um, the OSBA Spring Conference, that, that already came up, that was on my list to talk about, so that's really all I have, but thank you. So moving on for the financial report, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the treasurer of schools, the Newton Falls Board of Education, approve the financial reports for the month of January two thousand twenty, and the short-term investments made by the treasurer, which yielded, um, one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents for the general fund, zero for the cafeteria fund, and zero for the scholarship fund.
Do I have a motion?
So left.
So may Mrs. Crowder have a second? Mrs. Major, second one, any discussion?
I have discussion. I just wanna let you know, the scholarship fund in December every year, because we report a month behind because those statements come later in the month. So in December, they take the, the November interest and the December interest and sweep the account. So we reported both months for the scholarship in December, and then we'll get back on the regular schedule in February, so. If, but, but the account is still interest-bearing, it's just a timing issue.
And could you explain the scholarship fund, what that promises?
Um, it's the Zorn Scholarship Fund, and what it is, is the money is in a CD earning interest every month. And then at the end of the year, we let the guidance counselors know how much interest has been earned, and then they offer the scholarship. When they set up an account like that, the only money that can be spent is the interest. The, the principal amount that was initially invested will always be there earning interest, and they can only spend the interest there, so.
I don't remember how much it was.
Seventy-five thousand. Thank you. Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stumper?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes. Superintendent's reports and applications.
Uh, your package, you should have a copy of Calendar A and Calendar B. We have to, by law, now discuss the calendar at a board meeting, and we advertise, and we advertise, we're talking about it tonight. And then, um, at least thirty days afterwards, then we can adopt the calendar. So we would be doing that at our meeting in March. Calendar A is the calendar that's almost identical to what we did this year. I'll explain a little bit to you. Um, Calendar A has, um, less days than we used to do because we borrowed minutes to be able to do teacher-based team meetings every morning. Uh, building-level team meetings on Fridays, and we borrowed the minutes from days to put those at the beginning of the day so that we could do those. Uh, due to our report card designation, the last, uh, four to five years, we are required to try to have those types of meetings. And we struggled many years trying to figure out how to do them, we just didn't have time to do them. Um, if you would have had to try to hold people over after school, we would have to pay them, and they can't make it mandatory, so. Came to agreement with the union last year on an MOU to do something like this. I believe they voted on it again this year. I think at the March meeting, we'll have the MOU to approve. And have Calendar A be the calendar, which is just like the one that we had this year, with those, uh, meetings built into it. Calendar B is the old tradition, traditional calendar that we used to do, and this would not have the TBTs or the DLTs in there. And the reason I had to put that in there is in case we couldn't get an MOU. And if we couldn't get an MOU, we would probably have to revert back to something like this. Um, this is more of a calendar, kinda like TCTC would probably have, and this is kind of what we used to have, so. Um, we've had positive comments about the teacher-based team meetings this year, the building-level team meetings, and the district-level team meetings we have with our staff, with the state delegates that come in for our DLTs. And I think they're making a difference because what they do is they really target in those teacher-based team meetings. They try to target instruction, taking a look at kids that are struggling, kids that are on borderline. Uh, maybe a passing test versus not passing test. They talk about gifted, they talk about special ed kids. So they're able to talk about all the groups of kids that we have encompassing our school, and ways that they can intervene and help them, and they can share ideas with one another. Teachers, what's working, what's not working with this child, those kind of things. And until this year, we've really struggled to have that time to do that, and we really didn't follow much of the schedule like the state, the SST team wanted us to. So this would be the calendar, Calendar A, that I would be asking in March that we would look to approve. And again, that would have to have an MOU going with it from the teachers, but I do believe that, uh, the votes already been taken and that they were, uh, okay with doing it that way again.
Um, I'm very pleased with this calendar and the way it has unfolded this year, so, um, I'm supportive of plan A here, calendar.
Have you seen the teacher, have you already voted on this?
I believe they did, yeah.
Did they vote on it?
Yeah, I think, I think the vote was, uh, in favor of it, but I'll have that for you.
They'll say we'll know that before.
In March, yeah. Um, another thing, piggybacking on this, because you have to have this meeting now by fall, and then in March, after thirty days, you have to have a meeting to adopt your calendar for the final year. We're gonna need to make a change to our March, um, date, and then I'll ask you about another date. The March board meeting was scheduled for the nineteenth, that'll fall just a little bit shorter, the thirty days. We have spring break the next week, so I was hoping that we could do the March meeting on either Monday, the thirtieth, or Tuesday, the thirty-first.
Um, the thirtieth is our. Um. Northern Ohio. When would have to be the thirty-first?
Was the thirty-first work for everyone at six o'clock?
That's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that would be Tuesday. And Monday night, I guess, is the spring thing for the OSBA.
I can do my best.
Six o'clock on the thirty-first of March?
We do six thirty, I, or even six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
Yeah, because I gotta work at six, so if I come flying.
Six thirty, I don't want you flying.
Six thirty?
I use that literally.
Why?
Yeah.
Six thirty on the thirty-first.
Yeah, pulled over.
Stop by the train.
And while we're talking about possible changes to the board meetings, we don't have to do it now, but I wanna at least put it in your head. Um, June, the eighteenth would be our June meeting. I think my daughter's gonna be pretty upset if I'm not at rehearsal dinner that. So, if we could move that one, I would appreciate it. She's getting married on the nineteenth, rehearsal dinner will be on the eighteenth.
So that's when that June meeting's late.
Yeah, that's a good point. The June meeting, if it's late, does help the treasurer out a lot, so if we could maybe make it the twenty-fifth, the following Thursday? Does that work right now for everybody? And if, if something has to change as we get closer, we can, we can always move it around, but.
At six p.m.?
Yeah, six o'clock on the twenty-fifth would be our June meeting.
We don't have, uh, cemetery meetings in June, do we? I don't think we do, because I don't have a cemetery meeting, so I think we're off in June, if not. That one's dead.
I'll let you know.
Okay, uh, next, um, uh, my reports would be to discuss the levy. We have two renewal levies that will be on the ballot on March seventeenth. They are both renewals, they are not new taxes. One has been on the books since nineteen ninety-one, the other since two thousand and fifteen. Our district relies heavily on both of these levies. And I urge our, uh, voters to please go out and support our levies on March seventeenth. Again, they're renewals, they are not new levies. We do have a meeting, an informational meeting, on this Saturday at nine o'clock in our library. So that would be this Saturday, nine o'clock in our school library, that's the twenty-second of February. If anybody wants to come and ask about the levies or has any questions. Uh, going forward, I guess we need to discuss if we want to perhaps give some more thought to putting out some videos with the levy committee. We haven't tried that in the past, that might be a good thing to do. Um, and then, there has been some talk about possibly some of our staff members be willing to, maybe in the month of March, do some door-to-door, uh, campaigning for us on a couple of days. Mr. Crowder talked to me about it. Um, between he and I, we could probably put together, I don't know if we would get all the door-to-door people that we did the last time, but we could maybe do some door-to-door campaigning, maybe on a couple of. but we could maybe do some door-to-door campaigning, maybe on a couple of different dates, we could do it. Uh, if you're interested, you could be a part of that too, but there's been that kinda talk going forward with the levy. Anyone have anything they wanna add or talk about?
Where is this announced, this, how are we, does maybe?
Saturday?
Yeah.
Um, well, we talked about it last time, it's in the newsletter that I gave you.
Oh, not, not me, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean for everybody else?
Yeah.
Well, the newsletter was sent out to all our parents and, and to all of our, um, grandparents that have kids in their home. Anybody that has a student here got a newsletter.
Okay.
It's been on our, uh, website since then, it was pushed out on our social media website, uh, for over a week now, and, um.
Is there a, I mean, when you, the newsletter or whatever, so, I mean, am I allowed to throw it out on my Facebook?
Yes, you can, yeah.
Please do. I think it needs thrown.
If two board members would like to come Saturday, that's great, but we probably should talk about that, does it three come?
Right.
It could be considered a meeting, so if two of you would like to come, just let us know, and if something happens, we can't make it, that's fine.
I think somebody should be there for support and showing, right?
Well, historically, I've been with everyone for the last six years.
Okay, I'll go.
And I think we need a couple of three people that have different, have, you know, that are in different circles, that we could get people that hopefully come to these things, because we don't get along, we don't get people to come. Just last week, we, we got, we, a lot of people came, and children, maybe my wife, Julie.
I, I don't mind coming, um, my only concern, I thought, would be, um, incompetent or lack of knowledge or facts. That I would not be able to share, and definitely would not want to share the wrong information, so I would, I'm willing to go, I'm just putting that out there, I don't know how much I would share.
Information on what has worked in the past, what hasn't worked, maybe a couple of new sets of eyes could learn something else that we haven't. So that, that's why I'm advocating for some doing, well, I.
Oh, I'm, I'm good.
For that, I mean.
I, I don't mind going, I would gladly go, I just, that's my reservation.
Yeah, I have a funeral Saturday, yeah.
Weddings, funerals, you can go.
Well, I mean, I'll go Saturday, I don't, I mean, I'll go just in support of the, I see, and they're bugged out of me, and that's why.
Yeah, if I may, um, I don't know what the rules are, if publics can interrupt or anything, I'm sorry, but, uh, you're talking about a meeting this Saturday at the school library, at what time?
Nine o'clock, Saturday morning, the twenty-second.
Okay, I follow all the social media, there's five or six different pages for Newton Falls, I've never heard of this meeting. So I have, and, and I would assume there's a lot of other people that don't know about it. So what I would like to offer is, at the conclusion of this school board meeting, I'd like to have you on camera for just a minute or two, talk to the camera, and we'll put that out there tomorrow morning. Um, and then you guys could share that all over the place. Uh, and one step further, if I could have a couple, find a couple volunteers to help me on Saturday, we could shoot this public information session and put that meeting out there as a school board meeting, you know, type of a production, um, that would really help your cause. Um, depending upon the structure of that room, is there a place where people are gonna come up to a microphone to ask questions? Or is it a free-for-all, people are gonna stop things from their seats?
We usually have people sit around at the round tables in there and just, we talk individually one at a time and try to answer questions, very informal.
Well, it's actually in a small, like a type intimate type, you know, space, they're not spread out throughout the whole room.
We usually don't have more than five or ten people show up.
And I believe our committee, committee chairperson for our levy campaign will be at that meeting.
Oh, perfect, that's good, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to be there, um, and I would say that would fall under the Newton Falls television informational part of my contract with the city of Newton Falls, so there might not be an invoice for you folks for that. Yes, so, um, thank you, David Lynch, remember that, that's what you're saying, okay.
Why, so, why couldn't we, if that's what's happening, I mean, but why couldn't we do a question and answer sheet that you know? I mean, as much time as you've done this, you know the most common questions and, uh, and then, is that not something that you've done, that on that note, that day?
Well, um, there's not a whole lot to get into when it comes to the renewals, other than telling them what they are, when they started, maybe, you know, how much they bring in, that kinda thing, and what they're used for, which is basically that's, the money comes in to keep these doors open on those days, but from that, we might be able to generate questions that if we use Tom, we can.
Well, because I'll sit back and I'll say, excuse me, superintendent, can you tell me why? I mean, I'll sit back there as a board member and ask you questions if that's what has to happen, you know what I mean? And then, if we're gonna have this, I'll, I don't know, I mean, if there's just common questions, and if we get those questions out with your answer, and why, and where people can actually find their finance report, if they wanna double check you, you know? Does that make sense, or am I off base? I don't know. I just think if we had a question and answer, and we're gonna, you know, um, then it would be a really, it would be more.
No, that, that's, that probably turned into, like I said, historically, we haven't gotten a lot of people to show up and have that dialogue. So we'd have to get them to, you ask a question, so they're there, you pose.
My daughter has a meet.
I knew it.
I think it needs to be said, what's gonna happen if we don't pass regulations, like, this is what, it's gonna happen, it's.
Exactly.
First, first thing that's gonna happen is, this is gonna get cut, or that's gonna get cut.
Yeah, but we don't know that, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda hard to say that.
And if you do that, then right away, there're, a lot of people say, well, see, right away, they just go to the, their will and axes, and, you know, we're. Is it, are we safe to say that, there's nothing new, it's just renewing, so nobody's, money's gonna change what's coming out of their pockets to go for their taxes? So, I, I feel like that's a more positive or a more appropriate approach, and we've cut and cut and cut, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I can discuss the cuts on Saturday, what we've made, and that this money is pretty much what we get for our district through our operating bodies. And this is just to try to stay, well, with the cuts that we've made. Point four.
I will go door-to-door, I'm sorry, I will go door-to-door, I, I did that last time.
I'll, I'll see where that gets over the next week, we're looking at for volunteers, and I'll give you some information on that as to maybe there will be some walking days with lists and some literature that would go out on a door.
And we're talking this Saturday?
This Saturday is, is the meeting, yes. And it, it was pushed out, Mr. Donnelly pushed it out on our Facebook page for the levy and, and that information, and we've had it on the sign there. I know Mr. Pritchard said he hasn't seen it on some of the public Facebook stuff, but it has been pushed out there, and anybody that has a child in the school should know about it.
But we can't do like the one, it's not one call, whatever it is, can you, can you put out that way? Or are you not allowed to do that because it's not?
Yeah, I, I can probably put something out about the meeting, but I can't put anything out about voting.
Is this an informational meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that tomorrow.
So are you and I going Saturday? If the friends and I still have daughters, again?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
It works for me.
And then we'll have to try to get something in the works over the next week or two, we're gonna put out something, you talk about who's gonna do those, maybe if we have a board member, maybe myself, some, maybe a teacher, or administrator, whatever, maybe even, maybe even a child or a couple of kids, something like that.
I would like that I do, I would love to see some, maybe a terrorist case. On our, uh, NFEVSD site, it does have the levy information meeting, there will be a levy informational meeting for the public on Saturday, February twenty-second, at nine AM in the high school library, that was posted on two twenty, today.
That was, oh, what site was that?
That is our school site.
On our website?
Yeah.
I don't know why it's shown it was posted today, because I know that was up there, it could be him, nevermind.
Maybe he cryptic'd it.
Might have.
Yeah.
I think it was actually up to the end of last one. Okay, and let's see. I know, uh, one of the things I want you to be thinking about is if the levies do pass in March would be, um, be asking Mr. Crowder to get together with the union and talk about cross-country, possibly at the March meeting, on having that next year. And definitely, we're gonna need those two renewals to pass, but, uh, we would probably need to talk about looking at cross-country as a program for next year, this year. They did it on a trial basis, Mr. Colosimo, Mr. Hill were involved with that, it was successful, we had a lot of kids involved in it. They did it, um, volunteer basis, raised a lot of funds, they still have some of them for next year, so probably at the March meeting, have them do a presentation on where they're at, what they're proposing. Uh, we would have to do an MOU with the teachers' unit, because it's not something that's in the book, we don't have a cross-country team listed. Uh, but just to be thinking about that going into next one. We also talked about, and I believe the last meeting, we had somebody come forward and talk about wanting to do a bench, um, for, in honor of someone. I threw some ideas out, I've heard a few things, um, for paying tribute to people that maybe have passed on, or meant something to different families in the community, things like that. Uh, a couple of things that we threw out, and I even talked to other people about, that they thought were good ideas, were having some kind of a metal plate that goes into the new bleachers next year, with the rivets that would say in honor of or in memory of somebody, that would give us many different seats throughout the gymnasium to be able to do that on. Um, one of the things that we do do, some people do do, is scholarships, that there's especially a, a large amount of money and somebody passes on, and they wanna do it in memory of. I know we have a big scholarship day every spring here, um, where our seniors get a lot of scholarships, that's something that we could let people know about if, down the road, if they wanna do that. I did call, um, the sister that was here that night back and talked to her, and let her know that we wanted to talk about criteria going forward and things like that, she was understanding in that. Uh, when it comes to just putting benches here or there, I don't think that would be the right thing to do at this point, because if things go well in the next five to ten years, we're gonna change the structure of our campus, and we don't wanna have to just have benches popping up here and there, and then have to look at training rooms and things like that. If we get a walking trail in, in the next year or two, it would probably be a nice thing to have benches along the walking trail in honor of people, if people wanna do that. And that would be a good place for people that were walking, if they wanted to just sit down and enjoy nature, or maybe put their back there jogging or something like that, they need to stretch, put their foot on it, whatever. Those are just some thoughts that came up when I've talked to some people about this, because I said we've think about it a little bit and talk about it, um, since our last meeting. Anybody have any ideas?
Why can't we, I mean, because there's gonna be a lot involved in, even if in the walking trail, it gets out there and we do, we still have to have something in process.
And writing?
Yeah, yes, and I think it would be who has to have something like that in place. Those, that, those girls came to us, and, you know, and I understand, I mean, we've talked to them, and they understand we have to put things in place, but who is it that we said that would have to?
Have input or traction, um, I think, I think, if I remember right, we mentioned, uh, getting the, uh, athletic council, the athletic director.
And the, was it?
Administration.
Operation.
Grounds. Building grounds, because we said we, you know, placing them, we don't know what they have to know around, or, you know, that kinda stuff, um.
And I did talk to some of them, that's the ideas that came up here, where it was, in talking to some of, that's why I came up with the ideas that I came up with, and not just putting, uh, benches and stuff on the current, uh, campus that we have right now, because they thought that it would maybe be a little bit premature right now, that just, anybody could just come and say they wanna put a bench up here, or put a bench up here, that kinda thing, it needs to be more thought out, that's, that was the idea.
Well, that's what I'm asking them to do, is to think it out more, so that we have something in line.
Well, I think it's probably our responsibility to come up with the criteria, like, who, uh, who is, who are done memorial, that's right. If it's a bench, if it's a plant, if it's whatever, it's our responsibility to come up with criteria. And then, the next phase is all these other entities we're talking about, that they're in that, too.
So, okay.
We have to come up with some type of, you know, because really, if we don't have any criteria, if anybody that comes to this, this request, we'll have to.
No, I understand that, I understand what you're saying, but I also believe that we need, I know there's a hundred thousand things that need done here that prioritize, I understand that. But I don't believe, I believe that we should start that process, so, because we don't know what it's gonna entail, at least have some of our guidelines in line, so that we can move that forward.
May I suggest that we try to talk about it at the athletic council meeting first and foremost, and then, Mrs. Stenber had talked about maybe a work session down the road, that after we get some input from the different people on this, that we have a work session down the road, that you sit down and you talk about criteria, and see if there's an agreement on something that we can come up with.
Oh, I, yeah, as long as, I just, John, here's, here's why I'm pushing this so hard. Our community, there's the community, there's the school, there's, we need to pull this together. We had, and I've talked, I think we had three young ladies come up here, from our community, who, this is very dear to their heart. And they had the gumption, they came up here, this, Callie stood up here, and she let us know what she wanted, and like, you know, asked for, for what she wanted to do. I just feel strongly that if we just, I know we have bigger things to deal with, but if we don't address this and let the community see that when they come to us with something that is that important to them, that we proceed and we move forward. We just don't say, okay, we're gonna look at it, and this, and then we're gonna have bigger things build up, and we, it can get pushed back and back. We, Tom is following up, he's getting this trail, he's doing all this work, that, as fast as time goes, that trail's gonna be out there. He's working like a dog, so it's gonna be out there, and we're gonna then go, oh, now we gotta come up with criteria, and I don't wanna do that, I want to have things rolling.
Well, I, and I understand what you're saying, we don't wanna disappoint people, but we do get all kinds of things coming at us, that's why we need criteria, that's why we need it. And we haven't started this, I mean, last month is when it came to us, here we are four weeks later, and I've thrown out some things already to you, just from general conversations that I've had. So I think, I, I don't see it as something that's just gonna happen right away, it's something that's gonna be built up over a couple of months, us talking to people, getting some criteria together at the board administration, and I think we're in the process of doing it, but I, I just don't want us, and I think Mr. Powell was alluding to this, we, we've gotta be careful when people come to us, because, well, we get these from time to time, and we can't just jump at every single request, we've gotta try to develop criteria so that it's organized, and going down the road, you know, there is criteria for maybe a scholarship, there is criteria for what goes, you know, on a bench and on the walking trails, or what goes in memory of on the bleachers, that kinda thing.
Right, and I, and I understand that, and. Right. And I, and I understand that. And, um, I have, you know, I, I understand many, I, but with all the things that need to be placed. And are we going to, we talk about a work session? How and when do we, what is that?
Um, obviously to make a motion to have a work session, it has to be labeled and announced as a regular meeting, um, or a special meeting, uh, known as a work session. Um, there's no community input, et cetera. It's just for just things that you are mentioning and that you are mentioning, it's when we get together and we start working out, um, you know, working on whatever the board chooses as a priority. We're not gonna be able to whip out Rome one day, you know?
Right. No, I understand.
But, but we have, uh, to put a, a list together. So, yeah, we need to, to choose a day. And maybe we should go ahead and maybe look at choosing a day after. The election is the seventeenth, seventeenth. Maybe that followed Saturday.
Yeah.
Depending on what your schedules look like, you know, look at it and we can, we can set that.
Will we have like an agenda of what we're coming in to talk about, like what we're going to work on?
Yeah, you'll have to announce it in a special meeting, notice what you are gonna talk about. Because it is open to the public.
It's open even though they have no participation. Right.
And I...
And it, you know, I've seen, I have been to work sessions that were two hours. I have been to work sessions that have been eight hours.
Can I make a motion that we have, that we schedule a work session? I would like to make a motion.
And I'll second it. Is that how that works? You need to state when, you need to state your intent, you know, um, the time. And that way the treasurer can read all the criteria with the meetings.
So, the election is the seventeenth?
Election is the seventeenth and our board meeting has moved, been moved to the thirty first.
So, we have two Saturdays from the election to November, I don't mean the twenty first and twenty...
That's also spring break for us.
The twenty first?
Yeah, from the twenty, that week of the twenty third would be spring break because I don't know if anybody's going with it.
Some of us don't pass the...
I mean, that's just food forward. That was just my input, you know, if that was, if that time factor doesn't work since that is spring break.
We could, we could have it on an evening too. It doesn't have to be a Saturday. We can have it on an evening if you want.
If you wanna try like a tentative, like a, a short session to begin with, a four-hour session, you know, to, and I know that's long. But if you wanna, if there's something specific, you know, that we are wanting to address and start working on.
Okay, but you have, I know that you have had, you have been working on your, you know, a, a, the master plan.
That's a lot.
A vision, a vision.
A vision, yeah.
And everything they touched on last one.
Right. And my thoughts are if we don't narrow it down and get this done, we're looking at March, it's gonna be June and July. So, I just...
So, could, can we make for a smaller session and, and get a vision lined up or get a, set some main goals and then... So, like finding this criteria for memorializing people, I think that'd have to come after we get a basic outline of what our goal is.
And I think something like that really does need to come out of the athletic council and administration direction, which I think you're wanting to make sure it does not fall through the cracks.
Absolutely.
And so you can touch on it again in old business next month. He's already laid out things that he has touched and so he's following through. So, it's almost like he would be giving a report next month and that way you can keep in touch and since that is one of your passions to make sure that it's moving along.
It's not so much, it's the, it's not, it's not so much that I have a passion to put a bunch, my, my passion is to bring unity. Yes.
Okay.
And we have to do it right.
And that's the first thing I've had to deal with in my two months of, of sitting here.
Other than hiring a treasurer? So, once the athletic council...
Yeah.
We don't have anything scheduled. We could try to put something together in March.
What's your thoughts about it? What about a Thurs- what about a Thursday, a random Thursday?
Oh, wait, you, what, Mr. Woodard, your daughter's wedding coming up. You're gonna be...
Yes.
Next June.
Next June. Okay, we canceled this. Wait, we canceled this because we're moving on here. Okay.
He can't pull that card.
And I can take, I can take the notes. That way the treasurers and the superintendent do not have to be there. I mean, it's kind of the board trying to get answers and, and get their feet in the water. So, if they have things to do, that's fine. We're, you know, I can take, I, you will take recorder and, you know, record and, and document the times, et cetera. If you wanna go for a four-hour section, session.
If you guys are all good for the twenty first and you're not requiring us to be there, I could try to get an athletic council meeting together the week of the ninth and the sixteenth with Mr. Crowder. He's the one that usually gets it with Mr. Michaela.
And that's in March?
Yeah.
I'm fine with the twenty first. What do you even have?
Okay.
You're good? I mean, my kids have a...
I'm good right now. I'm okay for the twenty first.
I'm, how early?
Please an early period. Time on Saturday for the baseball.
Be...
Eight, so maybe like an eighteen idea for someone there to get rolling.
And specifically to discuss...
Can we say, um, a vision statement, an outline?
I, I, and, and what about to, um, start to develop a master plan for our community, our first school?
Okay.
We'll be, we'll be forty, we'll be...
Twenty eighth?
I will be on the twenty eighth.
Well, I guess we'll go to the twenty eighth?
So, yeah.
You say what?
Twenty eighth.
On the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth.
Interesting, development of a master plan?
Uh, yeah.
No?
Excuse me, but to the twenty eighth, no?
Twenty eighth of eight.
Master plan.
For the board?
Concerning the board, vision going forward.
For the school district.
For the school district.
So, motion by Mrs. Major, second. Mrs. Stenber?
Okay.
Okay, well, was Mrs. Stenber?
I started it, yeah.
Yeah, and then Mrs. Major?
Oh, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, the rest of my information would be for executives. So, I will go on to, uh, recommendations. We have a resignation for Casey Mulkey be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The New Falls Board of Education approved the resignation. Casey Mulkey has title one teacher at the elementary middle school effective February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. And she got, she, uh, got a job in Warren, a full-time teaching job. She was doing title for us.
Seven.
So, no, Mrs. Woodard, I'm second. Second, Mrs. Oaks. Any discussion?
I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but we had approved, we had grant money to hire a title.
Uh, the one that we, the...
So, now we need to hire two.
Well, we want to replace her, the one that we had posted for, um, the new one. Nobody, we don't have nobody.
Miss positions paid on title one.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but that, that grant money that we got, is that something that moving forward can start in August or not?
Yeah, uh, we try to get the positions for title filled in, you know?
I think, well, one of the reasons why is because if we had people lined up for those positions, we didn't have that and had the license.
Yeah, because of our, the money.
The money, so...
Her title wouldn't allow them to have a s- specific license.
Stenber, you got it.
So, we had to post it, it's why we're...
Not many have that. It's pretty tough.
Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Supplemental contract for Patrick Carden be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The New Falls Board of Education employed Patrick Carden as assistant baseball coach for the twenty twenty season. He's one of our teachers.
Motion?
Stenber, second.
Motion move by Mrs. Oaks, second by Mrs. Crowder. Any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Under classified supplemental contract for Cassie Gaunt be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools. The New Falls Board of Education employed Cassie Gaunt as assistant track coach for the twenty twenty season. You may know her, uh, by maiden name as, uh, that's Mitch.
Collins.
Collins's daughter. I think she was very good at track.
Alumni share, David Pauls?
Go motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Oaks?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stenber, any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Uh, Ohio High School Athletic Association being resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The New Falls Board of Education adopt the resolution from the Ohio High School Athletic Association that our school conduct athletics in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, interpretations and decisions of their association for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We have to pass this every year.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Crowder, I'm second.
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Stenber, any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. St- sorry, Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We did have an addendum for items too late for the agenda. There's two things on there. If I can turn your attention to that. I sat it out separately beside your packets beforehand. And if you don't have one, Mr. Powell, can you grab that, one of those ones in front of you to reach that? I got missed, mixed up in the shuffle throughout the meeting. What I'd like to do here is do number two and then we're gonna need to go into executive session, uh, at that point to discuss, um, number one and a few other items. And we'll be in executive session for a while and what to come out and will be action that we will have to take on number one. So, I'll do number two for employment of Norma Webb be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The New Falls Board of Education employed Norma Webb as part-time custodian effective January twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Seven.
So moved, Mrs. Crowder, I'm second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Major, any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Same.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to go into executive session to discuss the following. Under number one there, four for discipline, I mean, letter A, four for discipline, seven compensation. Under letter C, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action. And under letter E, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I make a motion that we go into executive session at seven, four B, eight, for the reasons stated above by Mr. Woodard. Number one, appointment. Number four, discipline. Number seven, compensation. Item C, conferences with an attorney for the public body considering disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action. E, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
Motion move by Mrs. Crowder, I'm second.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crow. I said one and by absentee appointment is not one of the reasons. I meant, when I said one, I meant letter A, so...
Okay. My motion stands corrected with removal of number one. And the reference and the inclusion of letter A. Is that how you...
Letter A, number four. Letter A, number seven. Letter C, letter E.
C. C and E.
Mrs. Major, I'm second. Any discussion? Local?
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Oaks?
Yes.
Mrs. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes. We are in executive session.